Give me a second to get my bearings. We're good. Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the January 14th, 2021 North Hills School District, sorry, North Hills School Board of Education Committee meeting with action to order. Before we proceed, I would just like to say that our district has suffered two very difficult losses recently. Bob Kleinfeldter, otherwise known as Mr. Bob, was a beloved bus driver who took extremely good care of our students, and he always had a smile for everyone and a kind word. We also suffered the unimaginable loss, a tragic loss of a student, Dylan Pacloski. Dylan was a junior at North Hills High School and a member of the marching band, wind ensemble, and jazz band. We offer our sincerest condolences to both, for both of these losses, and I would ask that we honor Dylan and Mr. Bob by holding a moment of silence in their memory before our salute to the flag. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Good evening again. I would like to announce that the board met this evening in executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. Also like to announce, I obviously have a very strange eye injury that I'm working through, so I'm trying to manage my best to do this with one eye this evening, so bear with me. Do any other board members have comments this evening?
Mrs. Mathis, I think we need to still do a roll call though, or roll call, not of attendance.
Well, thank you, Ms. Kozera. Sorry. My, I must usually see that with my left eye. Ms. Kozera?
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Dr. Knowlesch?
Here.
Ms. Philpott?
Here.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Here.
Mrs. Reed is not with us this evening. She's not feeling well. Miss, Mrs. Rennebeck?
Here.
Mrs. Spade?
Here.
Thank you, and I am also present. Okay, now do any other board members have any other comments or anything else I've missed this evening? No? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the December 8th, 2020 reorganization meeting and the December 8th, 2020 committee meeting with action. Per the attached, I move that the board approve the minutes from the December 8th, 2020 reorganization meeting and the December 8th, 2020 committee meeting with action. Is there a second?
D. Spade, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Kozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowlesch?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have Dr. Mannarino with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm just gonna share my screen to do this report here. Okay. Okay, as you can see, this slide talks about hybrid is back in action for us. We had hybrid this week. We had a group on Monday and Tuesday and B on Wednesday and Thursday to finish off our first semester, which is just amazing that that's where we are at this point of the year is that we are at the halfway point. Tomorrow is our clerical day that ends the first semester as our teachers and our staff begins to prepare for that second semester and close out the things that we needed to do here from the first semester. And you can see it's a nice four-day weekend for our students, and we begin on Tuesday, the 19th with, again, the hybrid with AA and BB to end it on Thursday and Friday, and then we resume with Wednesdays being virtual. When we get to February, you can see that the February calendar is pretty similar to this, but I just want to caution everybody that we could make changes in this February calendar if some things go a little bit better for us as far as students in school and as far as the virus in our community. And if you saw my video yesterday, there is a lot of hope out there for us, particularly as we have a vaccine that is working. We know that the school district employees are in Group 1B. I was actually notified while we were on this call that some of our district employees will be vaccinated actually rather quickly. I need to get a list of our nurses, psychologists, social workers, occupational therapists, and some students or some teachers that work in that environment to the Allegheny Intermediate Unit by noon tomorrow so that we can get them on 1A vaccination list. So this is all good news for us as we're beginning to climb our way out of this unfortunate year. So we are closer and closer to more in-person instruction. Again, in my video, I talked about finding ways to bring those students that are greatest risk back into more in-person instruction. So we're going to begin to work on those students coming back as early as next week, which is the first day of the second semester. So again, full person instruction is a goal of mine. I have said that since August. I'm really hopeful that based upon the vaccine being a positive step for us and hopefully the numbers continue to decline. I mean, I have continued to decline. We had 500 today in Allegheny County, but they're continuing to decline. So this five-day-a-week is a real possibility as we get to the spring of this year. Hopefully, as we get to the last nine weeks, we can see our students here in a five-day-a-week situation. At least that's my goal. I'm working really hard to find ways to make sure that we can keep students safe while they're in our buildings. We're looking at a lot of different products to add like partitions to desks situations so that we can feed all students, which is our biggest challenge. I've been saying from the beginning of the year is the cafeterias. So we're really looking for different solutions, working hard to think outside of the box so that a five-day-a-week in-person school week is really, really a possibility. So looking ahead, as I said, more students will be attending in person beginning next week. So there may be some crossover students. Students that have a last name that would be in Group B, maybe in both groups, they may be in Group A. But again, our buildings are thoroughly cleaned. Our custodial staff is doing an incredible job keeping our buildings clean and safe for us every single day. So although Wednesday is a day of virtual, it isn't really this deep clean that we have talked about because the building is really deeply cleaned every single night because of the products that we've purchased, the instruments that we've purchased in order to make sure that our buildings were clean and that we're following our health and safety plans and protocols. Students can continue to choose to remain virtual. The only thing that we're asking is it's really valuable information for us to know. Those days, the students are going to be virtual, whether it's one day or an extended week, or I'm just going to remain virtual regardless of what operating model the district is in. We really need to know that, and if we can notify our schools, our principals, and our teachers, if that's what we're choosing to do, it really allows us to better prepare and provide the best educational experience for our students. And this also will ensure that we get an open line of communication between those groups. So this is valuable to know as we explore possibilities of full in-person instruction for all students as well. Particularly, as I said, as we get closer to the solving the cafeteria issue, unfortunately, when our buildings were built, our elementary cafeterias are rather small. So to know that this is a group of students that will not be attending because they're going to choose to remain virtual will help us just get that much closer to solving the cafeteria issues that we're trying desperately to figure out how we can remain safe and socially distant in our cafeterias. This is really important because the guidance has changed. It changes frequently. It's changed so much that the Department of Education has now put a "what's new" button on the website, so you could easily get to their changes. So here's the way it's currently set up for us now that we're in a hybrid model. We're going to follow the Department of Education's 14-day threshold, and we're going to follow Allegheny County Health Department's recommendations as to when to close. The second bullet is the most important one. This chart is a recommendation, and we're going to follow this recommendation, but at the same time, anytime that there is a case, and every time that there's a case, I make a phone call to the Allegheny County Health Department and have a conversation with an epidemiologist about what's the best course of action for the district. And that's where their recommendation is, is the direction that we're going to follow. It'll, the length of closure is going to be based upon the number of cases, sure, but it's also when the cases occurred, where the cases occurred, how long it's going to take for us to clean the building or the area that was exposed, and then how long is it going to take us to contact trace. Allegheny County Health Department has said more than, more than once that their goal is to get students in school and keep students in school. So as long as we're safe, and they're not going to allow us to come back if we're not safe, they're going to close us for a period of time that they believe is best based upon the cases that we're experiencing, the cases that are in our specific community that we're experiencing, and what's going on in each of our individual buildings. So some of these, these charts have changed. Again, like I said with their "what's new" button, this is what's new as of the first week of December. So we can be closed for just one or two days. That's a distinct possibility, and that's why you can see our chart here says no longer than seven, no longer than five, no longer than 14. And again, it's based upon specific information about the cases and information that we received from the Allegheny County Health Department. The big thing that is really important to know, particularly when you're looking at our tracker, is that once a district or a building would be moved to virtual because of this, when we reopen, the case count resets to zero. So there will be times whenever there are active cases in a building, but they're not going to show up in a certain part of our tracker, which I'm going to share with you, because those no longer count in the community transition closure chart that you're looking at here. So again, once we would have to close a building or move the virtual, then that case count sets to zero. So the cases will still be active, but they just will not count towards the closure or the opening in this chart. So this is the look to the new tracker. There's a little bit more information, and it kind of goes along with, with the chart that I just shared with you. So again, the example here is, as you can see on this chart, McIntyre has six active cases. And McIntyre right now has six active cases, but those are cases that were discovered over the weekend. And so as the 14-day, 10-day rolling periods work with this virus, those cases are active. However, they don't show up in the other chart because those cases don't count towards that building because the students were not in the building when their case became active. So that, when we began on Monday with hybrid, all of our buildings were at zero, even though some of them had active cases. But you can see in this chart that Ross has two. Those are two active cases that occurred over the last two days. And so you can see how that shows up on the tracker chart, and you can see at the bottom with the circles, there's, the gray boxes are now becoming red at Ross, and that's showing you that we're kind of progressing towards that number where I may be having a conversation with the Health Department about our cases and whether or not we would close and for how long. So when that first dark gray box becomes filled with red, that's when that building has hit the threshold to have the potential of closing. So that's how the new tracker is going to look. As we move forward, it will still have the current active cases, but let's just say, for example, I get two more cases at Ross that would then put us at four and have to close the building for a day. The building would close. The number still might remain four based upon the number of days that those students are active or the number of faculty members that are active, but yet Ross would go back to zero the day that we reopen. So hopefully, that's understandable. It's kind of difficult to follow, but that's also in the frequently asked questions in the Department of Ed and the Department of Health websites. As you can see, if you'd like to go there to get a little bit more information. But that's how this tracker works, and that's how we're going to kind of monitor this as we progress forward. Does anybody have any questions about the tracker? I just clicked on it. So this is what it looks like in real time. So you can see it has not that, has much more information than it once did as this bottom is filled out.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say I know how hard Heather has worked to try to make the tracker as easy to understand as possible, and I appreciate all the, all the work that she has put into that tracker specifically.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the next part of my presentation tonight is about our school director recognition. So January is School Director Recognition Month in Pennsylvania. It's a time for us to spotlight the contributions of public school board members. So communities throughout the Commonwealth will take time this month to recognize school directors for their time and dedication to our public schools. Those who serve as school directors truly are public service volunteers. They deal with taxation and funding issues. They ensure that we have highly qualified administrators and teachers and develop policies that support learning, safety, personnel finances, and now they are leaders in a global pandemic. On behalf of the North Hill School District, employees and students, we would like to thank the board members in a very special way. A book has been purchased for each school library in honor of a particular board member, and in the front of the book, there is a book plate dedicating the book in your honor. Now, I already know I will not do a good job like our students do, but I will be presenting our books to our board members this evening. "The Promise of Change: One Girl's Story in the First Fight for School Equality" will be placed in the middle school library in honor of Mrs. Allison Mathis. In 1956, 14-year-old Joanne Allen was one of 12 African-American students who broke the Keller Barrier and integrated Clinton High School in Tennessee. Joanne found herself called on as a spokesperson for the Clinton 12, and this is the heartbreaking and relatable story of her four months thrust into the national spotlight as a trailblazer in history. "Promise of Change" is dedicated to Allison Mathis. Thank you, Mrs. Mathis.
Thank you.
"Only a Tree Knows How to Be a Tree" will be placed in the Westview Elementary School Library in honor of Mrs. Helen D. Spade. Trees have leaves that turn sunshine into food, which is amazing, and birds build nests, sing songs, hatch eggs, and fly. Dogs are our friends and can move their ears and tell us how they feel, while fish live in water. As for people, every person on earth is different, each with their own thoughts and feelings. With a simple narrative and joyful welcoming illustrations celebrating a world full of remarkable creatures, Mary Murphy reminds little ones that we are all unique and that we are the only ones who know how to be us. Thank you, Dee, for all you do for our district.
And thank you.
"My Own Words" will be placed in the high school library in honor of Mrs. Sandra Kozera. "My Own Words" showcases Ruth Bader Ginsburg's astonishing intellectual range. In this collection, Justice Ginsburg discusses gender equality, the workings of the Supreme Court, being Jewish, law and lawyers in opera, and the value of looking beyond US shores when interpreting the United States Constitution. Witty, engaging, serious, and playful, "My Own Words" is a fascinating glimpse into the life of one of America's "Denitist Marvel" is banished from the stage. "The Marvels" is a loving tribute to the power of story from an artist at the vanguard of creative innovation. Thank you, Mr. Little, for what you do for our district.
Thanks. Sounds just like my real life, so it's a good, good book.
"Ready to Fly" will be placed in the Westview Elementary School Library in honor of Dr. Annette Giovango Knowlesch. "Ready to Fly" is the true story of Sylvia Townsend, a girl who falls in love with ballet after seeing Swan Lake on television. A librarian helps Sylvia find a book about ballet, and to determine seven-year-old, with the help of her new books, starts teaching herself the basics of classic ballet. Soon Sylvia learns how to fly, how to dance, and how to dare to dream. Thank you, Dr. Knowlesch, for everything you do for us.
Thank you. Free choice.
"Kena Ford" in the second grade mix-up will be placed in the High Cliff Elementary School Library in honor of Mrs. Deanna Philpott. "Kena Ford" doesn't mean to be a troublemaker, but sometimes things get out of hand, and lucky for her, it's the beginning of the second grade, and Kena's got a clean slate. So when her new second-grade teacher, Ms. Campbell, mistakenly thinks it's her birthday and brings in a huge chocolate cake, Kena realizes that she's gotten herself into a sticky situation. She knows she has to tell the truth, but it's not easy to turn down her very own birthday cake and a chance to wear a sparkly crown. How will Kena get out of this mess? Thank you, Ms. Philpott, for everything you do for our district.
Thank you.
"How to Become an Accidental Genius" will be placed in the middle school library in honor of Mrs. Katie Ponyatowski. "How to Become an Accidental Genius" is full of inspiring tales of famous and lesser-known inventors who have changed the world. Readers will be amazed at the inventiveness of these geniuses, and the book also features profiles of inventive kids and teenagers. Thank you, Mrs. Ponyatowski, for all you do for us.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, Mrs. Reed is not with us tonight, but we are placing "Kena Ford" and "The Secret Journal" mix-up in the High Cliff Elementary School Library in honor of Mrs. Kathy Reed. "Kena Ford" loves writing in her journal. She keeps all of her thoughts in there, and even if they're sometimes not so nice. One day, Kena accidentally leaves her journal in Tiffany Harris's apartment, and Tiffany tells Kena that she's going to tell all of Kena's secrets. With the help of her brother, some classic fables, and a visiting author, Kena discovers that she must, what she must do to stand up to Tiffany and make things right with her friends. Would like to thank Mrs. Reed for all that she has done for our district. "The Lonely Heart of Mabel Lane" will be placed in the Ross Elementary School Library in honor of Mrs. Rachel Rennebeck. 11-year-old Mabel Lane collects sounds. She records the Louisiana crickets chirping, Mama strumming on her guitar, their broken trailer door squeaking, but the crown jewel of her collection is a sound she didn't collect herself, an old recording of her daddy's warm sunshine laugh saved on an old phone's voicemail. It's the only thing she has of his and the only thing she knows about him. Thank you, Mrs. Rennebeck, for everything that you do for North Hills.
Thank you.
"The Hero Two Doors Down" will be placed in the McIntyre Elementary School Library in honor of our solicitor, Mr. Michael Witherall. Stephen Satlaw is an eight-year-old boy living in Brooklyn, New York, which means he only cares about one thing, the Brooklyn Dodgers. Steve and his father spend hours reading sports pages and listening to games on the radio. Aside from an occasional run-in with his teacher, life is pretty simple for Steve, and then it happens. Steve's new neighbor is none other than Jackie Robinson. Steve is beyond excited about living two doors down from the Robinson family. He can't wait to meet Jackie. This is going to be the best baseball season yet. How many kids ever get to become friends with their hero? Thanks, Mr. Witherall, for everything you do for us.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation this evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Mannarino. That was really nice. We will next move on to the student representative reports.
Okay, so first off, Ellie and I want to thank the teachers and administration for making the first semester as normal as possible. We know it definitely could not have been easy teaching virtually, but we think our teachers did a great job, and we're happy to get back to winter sports mostly, and the teams are happy back to, are happy to be back playing. And we also wanted to mention bus driver Bob. He was Ellie and I's bus driver in elementary school, and we really would miss him. Like, we love, we love Bob. I agree with Hannah about the great effort the teachers and administration have done this semester. We cannot thank them enough. We also wanted to express our condolences to Dylan Paklowski's family. We cannot imagine the pain his family, friends, and classmates are going through right now. This is a loss to our entire North Hills. It is important we unite together as a district and never forget Dylan Paklowski's presence in the classroom, Materelli Stadium, and the community.
Thank you, girls. Thank you very much, and good luck with second semester.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I will now ask if the public has any comments on agenda items only. If you do, please raise your hand, and I will read our participation policy and bring you up to address the board and the administration. It doesn't look like anybody has their hands raised, but I've jumped the, I've been a little too quick a couple of times, so I will just wait a moment and see if anybody pops up. Hey, there'll be another opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting, so then we will move on. The next action we have on our board is a motion for the board to adopt Resolution 2102, which is adoption of the principles of governance and leadership as recommended by PSBA. The full resolution and the full, the full detailed principles of governance and leadership are attached to this, and I'm sure the board has reviewed it, and it's available for the public to review as well. So I just want to briefly say that as school directors, we volunteer hours of our time each month to school board governance responsibilities. We engage in complex decision-making involving a variety of areas, from budgeting and finance to policy and personnel. This year has been a particularly challenging one for all boards. I know it's been challenging for our board, and I've said before, and I will continue to say that I believe that when our board operates at a highly effective level, the entire district benefits, going from the administration to the staff, to the students, to the parents. So as recommended by PSBA, January seems like a good opportunity for school boards to re-adopt the principles for governance and leadership, which is a framework designed to increase board effectiveness. And I would like to move that the board adopt PSBA's principles of governance and leadership as we strive to work as a unified board to advocate earnestly, lead responsibly, govern efficiently, plan thoughtfully, evaluate continuously, communicate clearly, and act ethically.
I'll second that, Dee Spade.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote then. Ms. Kozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowlesch?
Aye.
Ms. Philpott?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Motion carries. We'll next move on to education, and I believe that Dr. Williams has prepared a report this evening.
I do. Dr. Mannarino, do you have access to my presentation? So good evening, everyone. I am pleased to update you. As Dr. Mannarino said, we are excitedly moving toward our second semester, and as we are moving toward our second semester, there are a few things now that we're back in hybrid that are actually happening and occurring. So if you could change the slide for me, Dr. Mannarino? We are looking at our benchmark assessments. As we return back to school, and we have students in front of us, benchmark assessments are critical, not only for the success of our students, but also for our teachers. So we will be making schedules for the I-Ready, the STAR, and the CDTs to be given to students, and these assessments showcase or illustrate for us where our students are in the learning process and allow our teachers to make any academic decisions that they need to to best support the needs of our students. The high school also successfully administered the end-of-course biology keystone test for all students who completed the first semester honors biology course. So we did go ahead and issue our first end-of-course keystone. Next slide, thank you. And we are preparing for 2021, 2022. The second quarter for students ended today, believe it or not, and the second semester will be beginning next Tuesday. As this happens, we begin to shift gears and start planning for the 2021, 2022 school year, and those plans are well underway. At the elementary level, parents should start to look forward to communication, I would say, within the next week regarding kindergarten registration and orientation processes as those things are being finalized, so as to adhere to the COVID safety guidelines. So again, that information should be forthcoming, I would say, within the next week. And the secondary schools are finalizing the scheduling process. As a result of COVID, we have moved the scheduling process back. Typically, it takes place here in mid to late January. We've actually moved it back till about the middle of February, but more information regarding scheduling and what that's going to look like will be forthcoming as well here very, very soon. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Williams. Does anybody have any questions on that presentation or on education topics? No? Okay, Mrs.? Okay, Mrs. Ponyatowski, do you have anything under athletics?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Mrs. Rennebeck, it doesn't look like there's anything under baby tonight.
Not tonight.
Okay. Well, next then move on to personnel, and Mrs. Spade.
Personnel items are discussed in executive session. The superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve personnel items one through four.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
I vote aye for everything, but I will abstain from two one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Little. Dr. Knowlish?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Mr. Little, it doesn't look like there's anything under community and intergovernmental relations this evening.
No, Madam President.
Okay. Ms. Cozera, I will hand it off to you for policy.
Yes, thank you. We have four policies that were reviewed and determined that no policy updates are required. Those are 308 employment contracts for administrative employees, 408 employment contracts for professional employees, 337 vacation, and 807 opening exercises. So those will be marked reviewed in our policy book. And then we have one policy to retire, which is Policy 620 Employee Purchase of Computers. This policy was drafted in 1993 when computers were a little bit different than they are now, and so the terms of the policy are no longer relevant to our current technology. So rather than try to sort of, you know, make it fit to our current situation, we're just going to retire that policy. Therefore, the superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve Policy Item Two.
I will second that, Spade.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Is there any discussion? No? Okay, we'll move on to a roll call vote. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowlish?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Motion carries. Next up, I believe Ms. Cozera has a legislative update for the board.
Yes, thank you. Just a brief update. The, I attended, PSBA, which is the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, puts on a weekly buzz meeting, and they had the first one of 2021. I believe it was the first one on Tuesday. There's a lot of discussion about charter schools, which is something we've talked about here a lot. And in particular, the process by which charter schools are given their charter and the funding formula. Just want to mention briefly that there's 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, and it's being projected that there will be a $475 million increase in charter school tuition for the coming year. $350 million of that is attributable to cyber charter schools. As always, this is likely to be a top financial concern for the coming year statewide and as school districts begin to work on their budget. I also wanted to mention that the Pennsylvania House and Senate were recently seated, of course, and they're in the process of forming their education committees. Locally, our state senator, Lindsay Williams, has traditionally been a member of the Senate Education Committee since she's been a senator, which means we have a fantastic resource in our corner. So I would encourage any parents who have concerns about things like education funding or standardized test requirements to reach out to Senator Williams to voice your concern. And I'm sure we'll have more detailed legislative updates as things get moving in the Pennsylvania Legislature this coming year. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cozera. Next, we have finance and Dr. Knowlish.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have seven items. So the first is the general fund bills. Very standard paying our bills. The second is the capital project fund bills, just a little bit of cleanup still with the middle school renovations. Third is our food service fund bills. Fourth is budget transfers. Fifth is payroll for the month of December in the amount of $3,067.670 and 28 cents. We then have a bid award for copy paper, and we're recommending that we award it to WB Mason, which is the low bidder. And then we have our Resolution 202021 dash oh one, the Act One Index. And just to explain what that is a little bit, we do this every year. The legislature gives us a level by which Act One that says that if, if you were going to increase taxes, you cannot do it more than by the index. And so at this time of the year, if a school district is, has any intention of asking for permission to increase it by more than the index, now is the time that you either say you're going to ask for that permission or you're not. Now, we are going to work very hard, as we always do, not to increase taxes at all. I don't know. I say that. I don't know. We do that every year. I don't know that, you know, we're just at the beginning in the budget process, but we can definitely say that we are not going to increase them by more than that index. So we are going to go ahead and verify that we are, we have no intention of raising above the index. So that's, that's a standard thing that happens every year. Does anyone have any questions about any of the finance?
Go ahead.
I wanted to ask about the, the limiting. Am I right? If we were to not pass that resolution, it would be a situation where we were in like pretty funny, pretty dire financial straits.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. Yeah.
Or we think that, you know, like, we, you know, like, we might want more money for something. This is more like the district is approaching bankruptcy.
Exactly. That's what it is. It's a, it's an opportunity for districts that are really in dire straits to try to get some relief. And that is not, we are not in that situation. So this does not apply to us.
Dr. Little?
Yeah, Dr. Knowlish, I just wanted to make mention that you said we were coming in the budget season. And while this may seem just like a simple vote, but this is really the board taking a hard line, saying, hey, you know, this is the max that we are willing to go if it were to happen. But I also want to relay back that the board did not raise taxes last year, right? So this is incredibly, this is incredibly impressive. I do want to make mention, which also kind of loops into what my colleague Ms. Cozera mentioned, was charter school funding. We lost one, we're about to lose $1.4 million this year in this district. Imagine if we didn't, because of these failing institutions constantly leeching on, that's right, I said leeching, onto districts like the North Hills. We wouldn't have these needs. And here we are coming into this season, and thank you, Dr. Knowlish, for your leadership in taking this on. But I just want to say that food for thought in the public here that $1.4 million to these failing institutions, and we have to deal with this every year.
Right? Right. And we need to, you know, we're committed to try to absorb that and as best we can because you know, but we have no choice. This is money that's already spent for us.
I have a question. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Knowlish.
I was just gonna say, you know, every time we look at the budget, charter schools are so connected to that. So, you know, Ms. Cozera's comments previously and your comments now, you know, this is a huge, huge issue for us.
Well, I just to mention again, I'm gonna keep on commenting, but you're talking about organizations, charter schools, and don't even disclose their spending. Imagine if the North Hills didn't have to tell the public they were spending on. We would be crucified. They don't have to. I mean, that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. Right? And they're taking this money hand over fist. There's zero accountability. And who can control it? Not us. But again, the, our legislators who fail to have the courage to do the right thing, and us here at the board, they don't let the scapegoats, right? It's important that we let the public know who really controls this stuff, and our hands are simply tied. It's just so frustrating.
My question was for, I guess, Dr. Knowlish and Mr. Muth, which is that a question and a comment that do we have plans to have a public budget committee this year? I know that we had to sort of change the process last year due to COVID, but I would, I would, I would personally like to see that back again this year. And if so, when would those meetings be starting?
We definitely will have a public budget committee meetings. We'll probably have at least four. One will be starting in February. And the superintendent has suggested we explore perhaps holding those meetings at Ross Elementary and be able to hold them live in person rather than Zoom if necessary. So yes, there will be four, and they will be announced soon.
Thank you.
If no one has any more questions, then the superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve finance items one through seven.
Spade, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade and Dr. Knowlish. Is there any additional discussion on these items? No? Okay. We'll proceed with our roll call. Ms. Cozera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Knowlish?
Aye.
Ms. Philpot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ponyatowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Rennebeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye, so the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Knowlish. Ms. Philpot, I understand you had a couple of updates under Support Services you'd like to present.
Yes, I just have a quick, quick two updates. The first one being on our solar panel project. We haven't talked about that in a couple of months. If you remember, we are currently in the research slash data gathering phase of installing, possibly installing solar panels on our middle school and high school roofs. So right now, where we are is that we're still trying to figure out if this would, if this project would save us money, cost us money, or have us break even. So we're currently looking at having four developers who have submitted proposals continue to the next step, which is figuring out that pricing. We would then have the financial projection presented to us, and we'll decide whether or not to proceed once we know if this would save us money, cost us money, or break, have us break even. So that should happen no earlier than the end of February. Mr. Muth, did I get all that right?
You did. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions about that before I move on to the second thing?
So you're saying that we're having, we're having four people put in RFPs then? Is that correct?
What happened is they had a early submission was due December 30th. And the company that the board approved to kind of oversee the project then went through and kind of evaluated who were the real players and which ones have no experience in doing this or long-term demonstrated success. And there are now four remaining, and now they're going to fine tune their financial projections. They will then reevaluate and present that to the board, what their recommendation is, if anyone, and then the board can decide whether or not to pursue.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, my second quick update is on our district wellness committee, which falls under Support Services. So we had our first meeting of the year in December, and we talked about our big project for the year. One of the biggest responsibilities of any district wellness committee is to manage the district's wellness policy. Every three years, which is this spring for us, the committee has to evaluate the district's progress in meeting the goals of the policy. And it must include the whole district community in that process. So over the next week, a survey will be going out to parents and guardians and students, and another one to staff. So kind of watch email or social media for those links. The deadline will be January 31st, and then the wellness committee will take a look at all the results and present them to the board and give them the PDE as is required. And then use them to suggest updates to the wellness policy and pick projects for next year. So it's, it's a process that has to happen every three years. So if you can fill out that survey, the wellness committee would really appreciate it, as would the board. It will help us update the policy later this semester. Any questions on that?
I had a quick question, Ms. Philpot. We had, I, and I apologize, I probably shouldn't have asked this in advance, but we have, you know, both the policy, but then we have like guidance to the, to the schools on how we implement the policy. And how is that sort of going to be reviewed by the wellness policy and by the survey? Is that incorporated? Or will that just kind of be updated? Will it kind of just flow along based on whether or not any changes are necessary?
So according to PDE, all we need to evaluate is the policy itself. So the guidelines that came from the policy, they don't need to see any sort of measure of our compliance or progress on those specific items. There are, there are parts of the policy that those guidelines came from, and so I suppose if we got results back from the surveys that made us want to take a look at those guidelines again, that would be a natural progression of the survey. But, but it doesn't specifically on this survey ask how you feel about, you know, the calories in the school snack or whatever, you know, whatever is in those guidelines, that that's not on the survey. There is an open-ended part. There's an open-ended part at the end that if somebody wanted to comment on those guidelines, I'm sure they could. But PDE just needs to see the policy, how we're doing, meeting the policy.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions on the wellness policy update? Okay. We'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. If anybody who is attending our Zoom webinar would like to make a public comment on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand virtually, and I will bring you up to address the board. Looks like we have one so far. I'll bring up Mr. Palermo.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Palermo. I live at 214 Sixth Avenue.
Before I begin. Mr. Palermo, I'm sorry, I need to read the, I need to read the participation policy really quickly.
All right, my bad.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay. We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hill School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. The board does reserve the right to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speaker and or issue. Some of your concerns can be quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion when appropriate. You're welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting. We appreciate your interest, and then you can go ahead and state your name and address and your comment.
My name is Nicholas Palermo. I live at 214 Sixth Avenue. Before I begin, I would first like to thank all members of the board for allowing me to speak. Last week on January 6th, it was announced that we had lost one of our students. For those of you, for those of you who didn't know Dylan Paklowski, please let me tell you about him. He was one of the kindest, most caring people I knew. We both entered our school's jazz band as bass players at the same time. Dylan was one of the most wonderful people to be around and was an incredibly talented bass player as well as a tuba player. Every morning, Dylan was the first person I would talk to once the morning bell rang. He always inspired me to become a better player and a better person in general. If you ever had something bothering you or just needed to talk, he was always there to listen and help you out. My heart breaks for his parents, his family, and everybody else who had the privilege to know him. On November 19th, my brother Lucas spoke to the board members to display his concerns on the online schooling situation, the lack of sports, and the impact on students' mental health since the start of the pandemic and our switch to online schooling. My brother's messages were returned with visible disinterest in his words, as well as no response after he spoke except for the words, "Thank you so much, Lucas, for speaking to the board this evening. I hope that this time I will not receive the same response." We lost an amazing soul and person due to mental health issues. I hold each and every one of us responsible for not doing as much as we should have to listen to and validate the concerns of our students' health and worries. I wish that we could have moved forward to create change in our school environment without having to lose a talented child with a promising future. All I ask now is that the school improves its already phenomenal counseling resources by providing help and reassurance to all students who need help, as well as increasing our mental health awareness. I also recommend that we change the way we conduct our current online-based education with regular communication over students' concerns, more flexibility with missing assignments, and to no longer treat the current curriculum as if we are still in a normal classroom. Finally, I hope that we can implement some kind of memorial for my friend's life created by and on behalf of the graduating class of 2022. Please keep my friend in your prayers and move forward from this point on being more proactive to prevent any future tragedies. Please keep my friend in your prayers and move forward from this point on being more proactive to prevent any future tragedies like this from occurring. A school is nothing without its students. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing uh, the board, Nicholas, and um, this has been a deeply painful loss for our district. And I will say that um, I agree with you that the mental health crises that we face are far from over and I think that we need to redouble our emphasis on the mental being of our entire community. And, you know, I don't like to speak on behalf of, of the board, even though I am board president, but I, I know that everybody on the board feels that way and I know that everybody on the board, uh, you know, cares about these issues and uh, really feels this deep loss and tragedy. Do we have any other comments from the public at this time? Okay, um, I would like to announce that the next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Thursday, February.
Madam President?
Yep.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I see a hand raised in the, in the attendees room.
Mrs. Campanella? Sorry, I missed your hand.
That's okay. I was very late in raising it. Um, I just wanted to speak to um, the, the student. I'm sorry. I did forget your name. I did not forget the words that you said. I wanted to bring it to um, the attention of all that would like to. A project is in the works where individuals can write a, a note, submit a picture or um, do a digital, excuse me, remembrance of Dylan. And uh, we will be putting something together to present to his parents. And if you're interested, we can work together specifically to make a section for the twenty-twenty-two um, class. And um, so I just wanted to let everybody know that and Mr. Lavelle will be, if he hasn't already, putting that information out there so that individuals could make those submissions by next Friday.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mrs. Campanella.
Sure.
Do we have any other um, comments from the public at this time? So I wanted to close the meeting by announcing that the next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Thursday, February fourth, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM. I believe we're going to try to do it in a hybrid fashion. Um, and I would like to remind everybody that there is no school tomorrow. Um, and with that being said, I would like to move to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Good night.